So the satellite time is officially 6:00 PM, so we will get started. Our schedule has been revamped a wee bit tonight. So originally, Mr. Tett was up. He has yielded his time, not that he's getting out of it, but he's yielded his time to the other group first. So we're going to start with the Tax Department. Mr. Quinn is traveling for business and not do back in the great town of Penfield until Friday. And Mr. Moore will be joining us shortly, but because everybody's ready, we're ready as well. We've got a quorum. We're going to move forward. So Peggy, the floor is yours. And everybody's got your revised items that you submitted, so thank you.
You're welcome. First things, I wanted to mention that in the fall when I created my goals and priorities, all of the items that I had on that list, you'll see on the bottom now, I had already accomplished everything and had it taken care of. So I immediately started working on new areas for this year because the things that I expected to take all year to accomplish have already been accomplished. So what I've decided to do at this point is to start to find areas in our office to make things a little bit more efficient and easier to get done. Right now, we're having a problem with a lot of error letters with all of our taxes. People are constantly sending in payments that are incorrect in regards to interest. So we're revising all of our letters so that they're shorter and that they're shortcutted onto our screens so we can choose the one that we need and it'll be less information printed so we can get in and out of them faster. We're hoping that might save some time, I don't know how much time, but right now, even today, there were 40 errors that came back that we had to work on. I'm also still trying to find something in regards to credit card options for the residents for taxes. Right now, the Monroe County site is charging a 3% fee for credit cards. I know that there are some other options out there, but a lot of them are just by phone. You have to dial a 1-800 number and plug your information in, which sometimes is difficult because you have to, if you press anything incorrectly, when I get the information through the emails, then I won't know what property they're trying to pay for. So I am researching that right now, trying to find another option for residents so they know if they don't want to go through Monroe County, there might be another way to do this. The next thing on my list is to update my instructional booklet that I had created in my absence if anything came up and someone had to sit into my place. I have to update everything due to our new e-tax program that has been put in place by Monroe County. It changes the whole process with reports and closing out the daily information, so I have to update that. The next thing I have, I have to reread this. Okay. This was a great idea. This was actually suggested by Lisa Grosser, and I thought it was so great. I told her, I said, "I'm going to suggest this. This is a good idea." When we have our very, very busy days and we have people lined up, a lot of people come in with their check written and ready, but there are many that walk up and they say, "Do you have a pen?" And all of a sudden, we have a line of people waiting. And she said, "You know, maybe we should get a table out in the rotunda just during our busy days with a few chairs with a sign that lets people know they can sit down to write their check before they approach the window." And I thought that was a great idea. That way, they're not feeling uncomfortable and rushed while people behind them are waiting because we can get sometimes 10 people in line and it really pushes everything back while people are standing there writing their checks out at the counter.
And a lot of their pens?
Yes. Hopefully pens that don't take off.
And no advertising?
No, no advertising. And Tony LaFountain for supervising.
Yeah, for your best sometime.
Okay. The other item that I had here was in regards to our organization of our office right now. The desks in our office has been changed right now, putting the taxes on one side and the clerks on the other side. It's working out okay. I don't know, we may not have to do this. I'm hoping to go through the rest of this tax season, see how things go. But right now, with the tax office, us being over here, our main tax window is at the opposite end, whereas the clerks are here and their window is here. We were thinking of switching over everything, and it's just a matter of moving the computers to the other sides just to make the flow of us getting up to take care of people easier. But I think at this point, we're going to wait and review it and see how much that affects the flow during our busy season. This all just happened in the last few weeks, so we really don't know what's going to happen, but that's just something I'm putting out there. It's a possibility I may want to do some changing with the up front of the, you know, the office area where we're working. Should I continue?
Absolutely.
Okay. That is really where I am, like I said, mainly because all of the accomplishments that we want to put in place with our new security keypad on our door, which has been taken care of, that has been working out great. The extra flow of people walking in our office now is really, really minimal, which I think makes for a much more secure office. We did change everything over. I jumped on to my accomplishments, I'm sorry, I'll move back up. We did make the changes in regards to the cash drawers with the calculator and everything, so now we can take cash at both windows, which has really made a big difference this tax season because we do have people that walk up at the same time with cash payments, and at one point, we had to make people move back to the other window. So now we have it set up so we can do it both windows. The tax tray as well for the money has been moved over one drawer, so again, it's closer to the clerk area, so we can do the same thing with taking the money over there. The mail machine has been moved into an area now that everyone has access to it, and I think that has been great. It gets rid of all the background noise in the office and a lot less interruptions with people walking in and out of the office constantly to use the mail machine. I also looked into getting barcode scanners now that we are processing a lot of our payments. They did come in and we are using them daily and it works out great. And it minimizes error because we can now just scan the bill to get into the system. In regards to expense and capital funding, I don't really have anything in there in regards to anything more there. I did mention I wanted to possibly go back to Horizons for one more class in Excel. I know that last year, we were able, they offered Excel 1 and 2. I might go back for Excel 3. It's really coming handy because now when we get our M&amp;T reports online, we have to actually export all the files into our computer and the way we have to bring them into the ledgers, going to that class last year made it possible for me to do that, which is really great. Saves a lot of time. The last thing I had is that in regards to ongoing specialized training, I'm hoping to attend the New York State Tax Receivers Association Seminar 2016. This is a four-day event in Lake Placid. This would be the first one that I would be attending in eight years that I've been the receiver. I thought it was time to get out and see what other towns are doing in the state and hopefully come back with some new and helpful information for the tax department.
Questions by the board? I think one thing I'd like to have added, Peggy, is that I'd like you to investigate a new cash counting machine, something that is a little bit more up-to-date technology-wise and could assist, especially when things get busy. I think the new machines now give you that option that if you get a cash payment, that that cash payment can be, you know, certainly verified by the taxpayer yourself and then the machine as well, and that may help with some efficiencies as well. I know you have one now, but it's almost as old as Tom Tett. So we need to look to get that upgraded.
They also have, the new machines also will detect counterfeit money as well and the denominations, they do all the above, and yeah, that would be great. I will look into that.
So if you would look into that, then we can talk at our updates.
Okay.
Other comments for you? All right.
And I know you mentioned that, Tracy.
Thank you very much.
I should have written that down.
There you go. There you go.
Great minds think alike.
Great minds think alike. So, thank you.
I'll leave one of these.
Actually, if you leave two of those, actually, if you would take in their box, Mr. Moore, and actually, if you leave one for me, for Mr. Moore, and then just put Mr. Quinn in his.
I will.
All right.
I can make one more copy for me so I can hand that to the minutes.
Okay. All right, I can do that.
You could have stated where you were, but...
Except then they're looking like this, so I'm trying to...
It's like being in a restaurant.
Double duty today. Okay, so you guys have my priorities and goals.
We do.
So I'm going to actually start at the top of the second page, just because for me, as you know, it's all about the high-quality customer service. I am going to continue doing in-home notary visits. It's been very helpful for the elderly especially, people over at the trailer parks that are mobile home parks that are, don't have cars or do not have people able to help them and need to get that information notarized prior to sending to Monroe County Health Department. I will continue after our wedding ceremonies to officiate and continue to accommodate residents who come in who need a handicap hanger but have difficulty walking to the office. So we'll process the request. They call me, I process the request, and then I deliver the hanger back to the resident while they're waiting in the car. The other thing I now allow is to have a representative for that person come in, and as long as they have the script from the doctor and that person's driver's license, they can do the applying for that person, and I can hand them over the handicap hanger and give them the instructions to give to the person who needs it. On the front page, so our records management project continuation and research and to implement high-density mobile shelving, I took a free grant writing seminar with the New York State Records Archive Director, actually, last week. And so we're moving closer to having that done. The only issue is that the grant that we would apply for is due April 1st. And so what my intention is, if I can get it done by then, it would, that would be great, but otherwise, to have everything all ready for the next round for the grants. That records management project, as I mentioned, for the shelving in our vault, is to help alleviate accidents occurring from any of our staff that go down there to pull our files. It's definitely old-fashioned shelving situation where there's boxes behind boxes. People could hurt their backs. We have to climb ladders to get them, and even if we request facilities to come and help us, it's really, it could be much better if we had this special type of shelving, which most towns are trying to go towards anyway, so. It would also entail having staff work overtime if we did this because we would have to get all the boxes out of the area. We may need to get, in fact, I know we need to get new boxing for some of our documents, so we would have a big project to do prior to getting that shelving in there. Moving on to our ongoing effort of destruction of expired records, we continue to follow the M1 retention schedule and to help free up the records vault so that there's enough space for our historical records and records that we still need to look at from time to As you know, I implemented the IMS immediate mailing service last year for first-class presort program, which reduced the postage costs. What I'm looking into now is to do that for certified mailings for the Town Hall, Town Courts, and Recreation Department. IMS would provide envelopes, it would eliminate green cards, it would provide us with the electronic tracking services through our computers and scan signatures, signature returns to save the town 75 cents each for each certified mail processed. I am currently working with the County Clerk's Office to schedule a new passport date. I will be providing, or have Monroe County provide with my help, the passport night two to three times this year, and I believe our next one will be in April. However, I do not have that date set in stone just yet. The County Clerk's Office will be getting back to me on that. And I have given them already five dates that we have cleared for this, for the auditorium. I'm working with our webmaster pertaining to selling permit information on the town's Facebook page. Right now, we have it currently on the website. And on the Facebook page, it would include a mock-up of the town's selling permit for residents to view. Also, reconfiguring the website page that pertains to the selling permits to make it more user-friendly for our residents, will bring to the top the actual vendor selling permits that are being used at this time with people going door-to-door so that when a resident pulls that up, that's the first thing they're going to see. The second thing I want to have in there is the information that our residents will be able to look and see how a solicitor is permitted to go door-to-door and what they need to have on their person, their ID badge, the selling permit. Often, we have people going door-to-door that don't have permits that will say, "Oh, yes, our permit is at the main office." Well, that is not acceptable. So this will give you a list of what they need to be looking for, and then the third component will be the actual selling permit application for those who want to have a selling permit or apply for a selling permit. So that would be...
Yeah, that would be great in terms of giving people a heads up as to who may be...
We've given a lot of information to our residents in reference to the, what is necessary and who has the, who has been given selling permits, but, and so it's great because they know what to look for and what to ask for, and this is just another component to make it easier for them. We will provide our annual rabies clinic first week in June, Saturday in June from 10 to 12, at our Sewer Department. We're in the process of hiring a clerk three position in the Town Clerk's Office. That person's going to begin on Monday, February 29th, and we will be training her, you know, throughout the month. So I don't need to change any resources at this time to maintain the current level of service for 2016. Personnel, as I mentioned, we're going to be replacing a clerk three. Our clerk three is going to be moving on to another department in our building. The hire, I'm going to be hiring again a summer/winter intern who primarily works for us by scanning our documents, and that's going to be helpful for our wafer fish project, which I'm going to get into a little later. And she also helps support our window work, so we are now, we never used to do that, and now it seems to work very well with people that I hire. We look at the customer service component along with the regular technicals.
Two minutes.
Two minutes, okay. So a number of other things, but I will just mention the wafer fish project because I think it's important. We are moving on to the next phase. We're waiting the last part of that phase that we've been working on with NanoArk. It is different planning board, zoning board, and town board minutes. We will be going on to having the finalize the building permits for 2010 through 2015. We're in the process of scanning the 2015 minutes, and that will continue on with the other boards that I mentioned. We will be adding Parks and Rec Advisory Board, although that has been dissolved. I find it important to have that history recorded and for anyone who was requesting that. And then I'll just go really quickly right on to accomplishments, and I'll just mention...
Two or three.
Okay, I'm going to mention one in particular, and I'm going to pass out some dog licensing brochures just because, there you go. And I think you have one, Tony?
I do. I've got a signed copy.
So I've worked with veterinarian clinics in the town of Penfield. I have also worked with Lollipop Farm. Not only do they have our brochures, and they will be making copies as they run out of them, but those brochures are going to be put in welcome packets for new dogs and also left on counters so that people know the importance of licensing the dog and the necessity of having a rabies vaccination and information about neutering and spaying. Also, all these, Clark Animal Hospital, Penfield Veterinary Clinic, Bayview Animal Hospital, and we are doing Brighton Animal Hospital along with Lollipop Farm have all agreed to put it on their websites. So not only will they have the brochures for the packets for the counters, they also will have them on the website. Also, let's see, oh, and I'll just mention one other thing.
Last one.
One other thing. For our selling permits, back to the selling permits of our solicitors going door-to-door, I feel for the safety of our town residents, I now require a passport size color photo. We put that on the permit, so when they're asked to present it, they can look and make sure it's that person's permit and not somebody else's they're carrying.
Okay. Questions for Amy?
No, very good.
All right.
I'll see you at the side.
Thank you. We wouldn't miss it. We would not miss it.
I would either.
All right, HR, Ms. Eastley. Seat's warm. Seat's probably hot.
Warm or dry?
I'll be quick. So, I think you have the copy, right, following along?
You're green over here.
Green. Four main points to cover. As you know, I've just completed, not too long ago, my first full year, getting a lot of insight into the town's operations, obviously, during that first year. So the four points, I didn't want to spread myself too thin, wanted to concentrate as much as possible. The first one that would always be kind of ongoing as far as the HR world, training and development. We have obviously noted an uptick in some costs of outside training. What I have found is through a membership, through a few memberships, but one in particular, SHRM, which is the Society for Human Resource Management, which the town does maintain a membership with, part of their package that they offer are some pretty extensive training modules that we're starting to use and do as much than internal training as we can. The first one that will be rolled out is hopefully going to be rolled out next week, and that will be an effective communication training, starting with DPW. So that's good. So again, ongoing, obviously, department heads keep track of all of their mandatory training that might be, you know, job-related, but we'll look at those kind of just for professional growth and overall development as well. The second point, policy review, development, and updates. One of the, probably the largest endeavor for this year is my hopes to, through the course of the year, to systematically go through the employee handbook, bring it, hopefully to be able to condense it some. But what I'm looking for, just so you can probably kind of be warned, is not to probably do one major overhaul, but systematically go through sections of it. So I would anticipate coming either before the board, you know, four, three or four times through the course of this year, to do it in sections. I don't think it has had a complete overhaul in quite a bit. It can be viewed as a little choppy, even the tone of language kind of changes through it, so you can tell it's been pieced through time and necessity. But we're trying to try to get a kind of general cohesive feel to it, an easier read, streamline things as we can.
Like general code.
Exactly. Try to streamline it, and the easier kind of layman's language that it is, you know, try to clear up areas that can be confusing to read or even passages that found in multiple places seem to contradict each other. So that can lead to some confusion. So it's to take, concentrate some time and spend some concerted energy on that front. Obviously, to keep a view for updating kind of rules, regulations, guidance from regulatory bodies to keep all of our policies up to date. This past year, we've done a lot with the Affordable Care Act reporting, and I'm glad to say that the department just did fantastic with that. It was very difficult, but we got to a place now where our monthly reports are reported quite seamlessly and easily. But again, as other things change, with anticipating some changes with the Department of Labor when it comes to Fair Labor Standards Act is kind of on the radar, so we're watching that. But again, to keep abreast of any kind of regulatory change as far as our policies go. Also, taking a look at some of the even internal forms that we use, you know, in our department to see if we can streamline, to have kind of maybe even a paper reduction if we can and things like that. One of the pieces that I've been working with Phyllis already on is the town has utilized the Monroe County's employment application, which typically those are used to sign up for the civil service exams, so they have a kind of a specific purpose. On the town, where Phyllis and I, and Phyllis has been great about this, are starting to do a town-specific job application to, so it suits and we get all the information that we need because some of that, we ran into a couple instances by using the Monroe County app that we knew we were missing some kind of pertinent information that wasn't asked. And also then, with the help of probably Dave, we'd be able to have that accessible online. So, you know, we don't need to have people come in, but then be able to fill it out and submit it online. The third bullet point, again, kind of an ongoing HR event, is succession planning and recruitment. You know, there's always a speculation of some retirements, one's happening very soon, which is near and dear to me. Karen Mathis is retiring in the end of March. Starting to noodle through, again, I always think at these transition times, it's a good time to stop, reassess what department needs are before kind of proceeding, but coming up with a game plan to see if, do we, you know, kind of remain status quo, or is this a good time to kind of change? But again, other departments are, you know, going through that as well. We have another kind of higher position retiring in the Department of Public Works with Dennis Sansada. So again, it's another place before we kind of proceed as is, to take time to work with the staff to see what their true and genuine needs are. And then the last, labor relations, and you know, as you know, we have kind of a unionized employee-based group, and we have non-employee-based. Typically, when the term "labor relations" comes out at first, we immediately jump to the union group, but firm believer that labor relations is all employees. Kind of going a little bit of hand-in-hand back to kind of the employee handbook, you've already kind of, we've already instituted some changes that have already come before and passed the board that really were lessening some restrictions on the employees, and the hope there is obviously, if we look through areas that we can find, that we can maybe relax some rules without productivity and operations suffering with the... without productivity and operations suffering, with the hopes that higher employee satisfaction means higher employee productivity. So it's again, to kind of bring them into the loop more, to bring employees more into the conversation with things, you know, that about policy changes and things like that, to get more feedback from them and to keep kind of a better finger on the pulse of kind of the mood, morale. So those are my kind of hopes for this coming year.
Questions for Tracy? I'll just take a minute and I just want to recognize Tracy, Tracy Anbuck and Jim Crackman probably were the three key people as it related to establishing our new employee break room that we have down in the basement, a place for employees instead of eating in their vehicle.
Getting refurbished or something? I went down there to see David about something one day and there was like all his stuff.
Yes. We were pretty proud of that. We have obviously the galley kitchen.
You're just sitting down there reading.
We obviously have a galley kitchen here, but there really wasn't a lot of times, like on Tuesday, this is used by DMV. And what we were kind of seeing is sometimes people were sitting in their cars. I'm like, oh, it's cold out there now. So the room that Synergy used for IT was a pretty large enough room and we could relocate and still maintain a space for them. But yeah, so we have a little fridge in there and now it's just kind of a more comfy place to go.
People get away.
Where we'll get away from their desks. Yeah. And it is, that is important. We're having more people, you know, you can sit at your desk and have lunch, but when that phone rings, it's kind of hard to ignore it or when somebody comes and asks for you, and oh, I'm sorry, I'm on lunch. So it was a nice little place for pretty definite. So that was exciting.
Good.
All right?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Have a great evening. Phyllis? Welcome, welcome.
Well, my years are rather redundant, so I could say business as usual, but my priorities for this year are to continue to do the same things. To keep residents informed of what's going on in the town. I figure that's the elevator speech for the position. And choosing the right tools to do the job. Where's your audience? What do they need to know? When do they need to know it? All that sort of thing. And work with my counterparts in PCTV and Sabrina. We're kind of a triangle and between all of us, we get the messages out. Continue to serve on particular committees, the Energy Environmental Committee, which we just had our meeting, and work on the communications from whatever projects we have going on. And the Wellness Committee, which has really matured a lot over, we've had, is it six years now?
Yeah, I think it is.
I think it is. We got an award this year from the American Heart Association for being a heart healthy workplace. So that, I like being part of that team. There's good, steady people, Michelle and Chris, they're great to work with. And the other thing that I do, and I was even making lists while I was listening to other people, is pay attention to what the other departments have going on and looking for ways to improve and external communications. And if there's ever a downtime, I'll work with the department and say, what do you send people? And let's take a look at those letters. Sometimes you find stuff that was typed and photocopied about 20 times. And it's, ooh, you know, I think we can get that up to date a little bit more. So over time, everything I think has upgraded and our department heads seem very interested in wanting to have good communications with residents, so that makes it easy. Any changes that I need to maintain service? No. I don't need any people. I'm still using my adult daughter's school supplies, so I don't need any expenses. And there's a training coming up that I was interested in for Photoshop that is in March. So I was looking at that. We saw that flyer. So I've been trained on it. It's kind of self-taught, but it keeps changing, so I thought I might want to attend that. And the major projects that other departments tap into me for, mixed-use wellness and the energy and advisory and then any other major events that are coming up. And I think accomplishments are just everything that I just said I'm going to do this year, did last year too. So that's it. That's me in a nutshell. And whatever Tony needs done.
Perfect.
Essentially.
At least somebody tells him that.
Questions for Phyllis?
No questions. I would just encourage you, you know, anytime that you all can, you know, let us know when you're, you know, blasting something out, we do our best, especially Linda and I on social media, to share, to just, you know, duplicate that, let people know, either short-term or long-term stuff. You know, we're certainly here to close that loop and get it out to even more people than whom, you know, may, we may hit just from the town.
That is true. Sometimes you don't know it's coming out and it's there. Today I saw, it came out about, you know, what's being said about the.
Message from the supervisor, yes.
Message from the supervisor. It's like, oh, and somebody had liked it and it's like, oh, I'm gonna share that. So I took it, that's important. But I would have probably done it earlier in the day if I'd known it was going to be coming out. It would have been more, you know. And sometimes there's things you really want it out when it comes out with a.
Make it part of the approval, because there is a process. And then when we all agree on the message, we can do a heads up, check your Facebook.
Check your Facebook.
It might just be that simple.
I think it is that simple.
Yeah, I don't think you need to put another layer of process on. You know, when you send it out, just send it out to us too or something, just, you know, which is, which is fine. I mean, you've done it before.
You are on the distribution for the formal announcements, like press releases.
Right, but you don't know sometimes when it's going to go on.
It's the social, the social stuff.
And I know Phyllis was very active in the mixed-use committee, both as a resident and a town employee. And so, you know, I appreciate your efforts on that committee. It was a long process, but I think at the, at the end, it produced a good product. And I think that the committee, you know, genuinely stands behind the mixed-use product. And certainly, you know, there were some members that were a lot more vocal than other members, but you were, you were one of the more active members and I think you added a lot of value to that. Yeah, we all did. We all learned a lot. So, I appreciate that.
Is there anything on the town website about that Heart Association award? Like a little thing you can put on the.
Like a designation?
Something that says.
I don't know that they issued that.
Or heart healthy communities.
The heart healthy workplace, you know? I think that's good.
It was, it was in, it was in some of Tony's communications, but is there like a good housekeeping seal?
Just a little American Heart, I don't know if we can do that, a little American Heart Association thing. It says, you know, town of Penfield has been awarded the heart healthy workplace.
Well, I think that, I like that idea because I know, you know, the staff here and particularly Chris Beilow at the Recreation Department is really pushing wellness initiatives on, you know, the adults, seniors, and with youth throughout the community. And so I think that's just a part of that synergy.
Branding.
Absolutely.
The town branding.
That we're, that we're taking it, that the town employees are taking it seriously, you know? I think that's good.
And that's interdepartmental stuff too comes out.
I would just suggest that, I think you should.
We'll put it on the job app. Is your, are you heart healthy? Here's your job profile. Welcome to the town.
Here's a Snickers bar.
Well, we certainly can take a look at it and our contact Gary at the American Heart Association. He can caution guide us if there's any things that we can use by way of logos or, you know, or even just maybe, you know, posting, posting the letter, you know, doing something along those lines.
Just that American Heart Association logo and just a little.
Worth a phone call.
Okay. All right.
We can do that.
Good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phyllis.
Thanks, Phyllis. Have a good night. All right, Mr. Tatt. We're running just about 20 minutes behind. You're gonna help us, you're gonna help us catch up is what, is what I'm, is what I'm assuming here, so.
If you look at my goals for the Department for Building Fire Codes, Department, I continue to support the town of Penfield through the property maintenance code, ensure quality of life, leave a positive impression on residents and visitors. We promote life safety through the Office of the Fire Marshal and the Building Department, ensure safety for all that, as you've heard me say before, little visitor work in the town of Penfield. Continue with the Building Department Inspection Program for new buildings, additions, decks, pools. Intermix the Office of the Fire Marshal to support the busy Building Department during the busy season, which is the summer season. Integrated Property Maintenance Use, the Department continues to grow with the addition of such things as reporting off-duty emergency response, which, that would have to do with the Fire Marshal's office. And I would also like to just throw in here the little blurb. I'd like to transition to three tablets for the utilizing the field for integrated property system reporting. We will continue to update our Building Department and Fire Marshal's web presence through the use of the town of Penfield website. I took on the additional duties of Town of Penfield Safety Coordinator this year with the retirement of Mark D. Francesco. And personnel, continue with the part-time code enforcement officer to assist with ever-growing list of bringing town violations to a close. Also utilize this position to transition in plan review, which we're doing. We do have a part-time code enforcement officer, but he's also doing some plan review processes. And he's learning building inspection duties at this time too. And I can honestly say there's a smile on Andy Cervegas' face, which you probably all haven't seen very often.
Not since I've been here.
Yeah, and if you come up and see Andy, now you'll see a smile on his face.
Okay, good.
And just for boys' information, the individual that's working part-time is working part-time with us two full days a week and then he's working part-time with the town of Rush. So it's a nice relationship that we've got and a Penfield resident.
I talked already about purchasing three tablet computers for future use in the field, which I will discuss a little bit more if you have any questions. One for the Building Department, one for Fire Marshal, one for code enforcement. I would also like to transition to Zoning Department, electronic media, rather than the antiquated paper way of doing business. This would mean the purchasing of six tablets. I mean, if you look at what we do, everything is basically electronic media except for the zoning department. Can still continue to have a stack of papers and I'd really like to bring them up to today's times. Special support, computer, we continue education with the staff on Microsoft Office use, which I've sent quite a few employees to, and I will continue to do that as they wish and as we are able to do so. We have to continue our 24 hours of New York State certification. That's a requirement for all us code enforcement officials, so that would mean the four building inspectors now or the three building inspectors, the one part-timer, we are not, Rush is paying for his, and the two Fire Marshals. Provide additional support, computer support training as needed through the year. Still reviewing the town codes, applies to department update for any changes in consistency with other codes and regulations. Inspection staff has completed their required continued education. Staff continues to work to make changes to information and links available on the town website, working with David. Staff continues their work to update the integrated property system. And the Fire Marshal's office completed updating the Penfield disaster plan. I jotted down a few notes here I wanted to give you. I didn't put on the sheet and I apologize for that. We built 78 single-family homes last year. We permitted three multiple-family homes. That would be the Waters Edge apartment complex.
South Point Cove.
South, well, it's Waters Edge now it's called, South Point Cove, as you may know it. Buildings five, nine, and 10, and we have permitted four additional ones. They should be complete soon. South Point Grill is right next to the Waters Edge and that one should be complete very soon. Hampton Inn is being built, as you know, down a panorama trail. The new Walmart store continues to be a monster to deal with. And our new clerk that Amy was referring to is Christine Shaw. She saw us up in our apartment. That's it. How was that? Pretty good?
Very good, sir. Questions for Tom?
Do, one quick question, Tom. How are we doing on foreclosed residential properties in Penfield?
They continue to be a problem for us. They continue to rise up to the surface and they continue to push at us a little bit, but we continue to address those as they push at us. We don't go out and look for them, Andy.
Yeah.
We don't go out and look for them, but they do, they do pop up. So they do continue to be a problem. I think that's always going to be a bite.
To give you an idea, I think we had between 12 and 15 last year that we were actively involved with working with a bank or having our contractor, Boone &amp; Son, maintain and then us bill back on the taxes for that property.
Any, any number is, you know, unfortunate. I know one town that is up in the 70s.
No, we're not that high.
Yeah, 70 properties that they're dealing with. So it's not as bad as other communities by far, but.
No, it's not that.
Yeah, they certainly add blight to the community, to the neighborhood. Thanks.
Yeah, no problem. Good. Thank you.
One request. Would it be possible to, as, you know, as files, as your staff goes through files, basically if at any time, somebody mentions, you know, one of us, like I talked to Paula Metzler about that zombie property or I, you know, or if I've referred somebody, sometimes I'll refer people directly.
You have, Paula, you have.
Just so that if that shows up in the file, like either to somehow communicate back to us so that kind of we know what's going on, on something that might have, you know, come up on our radar. Or also too, I think, you know, we do have people who sometimes take information we've given them and maybe mishear it, misconstrue it, or maybe use it for their own, try to use it for their own benefit. And we'd like to not, you know, not be, I'd like to not be surprised or to know if, you know, if something has come up regarding any issue I've talked to somebody about. And just so that, you know, before that, you know, while that file's being worked and especially I think before it's closed, to let us know, hey, you know, hey Paula, that property that somebody, you know, asked you about, they told, they told me you told him this. You know, just want to close the loop with you. We can make sure that your file is accurate and then, and also so that we know so that if, usually they see us in Wegmans or something, we kind of are up to speed.
Totally agree. No, I can bring that up to staff at our next staff meeting talking about.
It potentially that allows us an opportunity to give you a little bit of additional background information on something, so I think it's a good point.
Okay. My pleasure. Made it known of it. All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, sir. David?
All righty. We on for a hard stop or?
We'll, you know, we'll go as long as we can go.
Got it. All right. For the year, we're looking at six main points. First one is going to be facility maintenance. This is an ongoing project as always. And first and foremost, it's, at the top of the list is the playback automation system. This is an item we've been talking about since 2013 to present. We continue to address the concerns regarding the public education and government access cable stations. And as you are well aware, government access is only for live-only purposes. We have now discontinued public access and educational access has not been established. We're reevaluating the existing engineering solutions and the alternatives that the operation, what we can do with those things that we have looked at from the pre-existing system, systems that we were looking at for replacement and those alternatives and seeing what can work and what kind of hybrid system could potentially come of that. We continue to work to review the combined facility systems between the multiple agencies and seeing what the pluses and minuses are with those. The specs, of course, as we continue to look at different systems is changing that scope of what we can and cannot do. And ultimately, what we're really looking for is a system that can support IP workflow versus the traditional video-based systems, given that video-based systems are much more expensive in operation and maintenance long-term than an IP-based system. We continue to utilize third-party resources to repair aging equipment. We see this area unfortunately of increasing costs for continuing to maintain old updated systems. Partnerships ongoing. As you are well aware, we've had a long relationship with the town of Arondequay. We continue to strengthen our ongoing collaboration with these surrounding agencies, staffing and project support. And that includes town of Arondequay, County Monroe, Penfield Webster, and Rochester City Schools. And we're attempting to firm up some better agreements with the town of Webster for opportunities. Franchising Authority, LFA, cable agreement, this is our franchise agreement. Just so you're all aware, the LFA, as we refer to it, the local franchising authority, is the town board. We continue to work with the New York State Public Service Commission and the FCC regarding the franchise transfer between Time Warner Cable and Charter Communications. Review of the new FCC requirements for cable operation for the LFA and PEG operations. There has been some dramatic changes in more recent time and it's most recently, as we look at things that the FCC is doing, is now opening up a comment base for removing of the cable box from a cost base, but now to allow that to be in the hands of the consumer to make choice. Yes, sir. So our current franchise has expired a number of years ago and we're looking at the. Supervisor LaFontaine, myself, and the town attorney has been working with a third-party law firm to examine existing agreements, the town law that was adopted a few years back, and the current regulations that are within the cable communication industry. We're looking to conduct a financial audit of the cable providers' past payments and subscriber fees, and a third-party recommendations for next steps in regards to a franchise agreement. And this is in part due to the changing landscape of technologies that are in front of us. Web video streaming, this is an ongoing service. We're continuing right now to address online viewers' comments regarding poor streaming quality and reliability. Over-the-top OTT delivery app, I have referred to this in passes, Roku app. Development and media content delivery to consumer streaming devices. The app to be accessible by all major device manufacturers. Use of third-party service to assist with the development and deployment of said app. There's an economy to scale when we look at this, and originally, we were looking at this as a single app driven for one type of device. We quickly realized, as we were looking into the development and moving forward on that part of the project, that we were going to be missing Apple, Amazon, and a number of other devices, such as TiVo-type devices. So the economy of scale is for a little bit more in cost, we can then be able to meet the needs of all those major OTT devices, as well as manufacturers of televisions, Blu-ray players, et cetera, for the delivery platform. Multi-municipal development is the goal with that, so instead of it being branded for one municipality, but to be branded for many, and then from that standpoint, we can benefit, again, from the economy of scale to bring more players in. Increases the project and the development, but it has a greater cost reduction to us, as well as others in the process. Website. The website remains an ongoing project. I think that excited mostly all. Updating content reviewing, site analytics to ensure the information is accessible. This requires involvement of all town staff, officials, and various levels for involvement and support. A site with clean and accurate data is the goal. We continue to archive and remove old data, replace non-compliant file formats, recording, and prior, excuse me, re-orderizing, organizing, and prioritizing page links based upon the site analytics. Increase site page load times, reducing file size, cleaning and removing fragment site code. Evaluating each site for its operation base on guidelines based on the ADA and industry standards for accessibility. Seeking use of a third-party service and a vendor to assist with a town-wide audit in evaluating each of the sites that we utilize, as well as the next steps for that. Add function to allow site pages direct sharing via social media from within the website itself. Social media continues to be utilized. We're going to continue to utilize the established accounts for sharing and gathering of community information, as we have done in the past. Personnel. So we continue to utilize contract services to fill department needs. The note here is that these contractors are single-task-oriented, oriented most of the time for our operations, and do not provide for department backup in the event of staff emergencies or long-term absence. Spends and capital. Again, continue to discuss with you the replacement of the playback and automation system and operations for the web and cable delivery. Remaining automation components require replacement, and this is if we stay with a base-band video system, we need to look at replacing those components as well. If we go IP, then we no longer need to continue to support those services. Production system and services for coverage of meetings, no change. Website, software upgrades, plugins, third-party code, support, and hosting. Specialized support, website, third-party audit, franchise, a law firm, IT/ISP, Internet Service Provider, need for increasing bandwidth, and the OTT app development and deployment. Staff continues to work with the Society of Broadcasting Engineer, SBE, with local meetings. Lynda.com continues to remain a training opportunity for staff internally. We would like to return to some of the conferences regarding to PEG, as well as to social media and website development, to understand what's changing in the landscape. Continue to take town authorized computer training, and continue to cross-train department administration staff to support evening production operations. Major projects involving other town departments. Website services, we touch every department. Media and AV, we touch every department. Needs for our department, though, is assistance from the facilities team to address a temperature issue we have within the control room during broadcast of meetings. Our room can hit as much as 95 degrees on a winter day. Brief goals or accomplishments. Web video streaming. So as I said, we have a problem due to poor quality, but the important part was that as part of going to this new format, we were able to be able to successfully get to mobile devices. But once we had done that, we also then generated a new problem with the bandwidth. LTO archive, that is in place, and was with the assistance of the IT coordinator and Buck. So we are now long-term archiving and storing content offsite, and then communications database was completed as well for ongoing communications. I did attach with this a quick page of some baseline summaries of some stats. If you had questions on stats, I'd be happy to answer, but I figured you could take that as an FYI. Overall, for the websites, we've seen a 3% decrease in the use at Penfield.org.
So when you're putting the things, since I've been watching these videos, you have some on Vimeo, and you have some on YouTube. Are you trying to duplicate it so for people that can't get on one, get on the other? It looked like there were some here, some there.
There's a shared aspect to that, and just try to make it as simple as possible. YouTube is a free service, and it comes with a number of hoops that come with that and some challenges. On the same side, Vimeo is a paid service. We do pay for an annual account with them, and we're allowed X number of gigabits of upload per week. So with that, we can control, and we use that primarily for the town content for meeting purposes, because we have guaranteed storage within that realm. All of the kind of school content that we receive for community events, we defer that back to YouTube. In addition to that part of it, we then also do put the meetings there as well. So there's a kind of a cross-platform between the two. There's a user choice in it. It's not different than some like Facebook, some like Twitter, some like Pinterest. So we're trying to meet the masses, but also we do that on an effective basis, both cost and time.
And the school board, they have their own, I went on their site, and their video feeds right there, their meetings, they have it archived on the side of their front homepage. Can you just, like, link over to that, instead of having to have it, I don't know, downloading it and putting it on our site? Can you just, like, link it? I'm just thinking of easier ways, storage-wise.
Well, YouTube and Vimeo are third-party services. So if the school district was using one of those services under a portal that we were currently using, yes, you could do that. For what you're saying, that the example would be, well, let me take what's on Facebook, and take that content, and just link it back over to Twitter. The two are not compatible. The service that the school district uses is something new and more recent time. We have a long-term archive, and we continue to maintain that, as that does have a very high viewership. I've used this term before, content's king. More content, we could put under one roof, or one umbrella, more eyeballs will come in to be able to have access. As soon as we start parceling it out and saying, we're all going to be subject-specific to one group, one type of topic, all of a sudden, your opportunity for viewership decreases. So that would be the saying, let's take the town's Facebook page and only put out messages from DPW, and then have another account for supervisor, have another. We would not get the same penetration as you would by putting multiple topics under one.
I agree with you on that.
All right. And how do you, when you take content out and off the website, you talk to the, like, if it's in planning, do you talk to the planning director first, or is it just based on the analytics that nobody's looking at it, or so you think, and so it goes away, and then somebody else says they want to see it, and it's gone, and then you have to work that up? So do you talk to the department heads before you do it?
Staff meeting, Tony could vouch for me here, is that there's a standard topic of, you know, we need every department to review their content on a regular basis, including yourselves. If you're not reviewing the content off your specific areas for the various boards that you represent, it is impossible for myself or my team to go through and audit some 400-plus pages on a regular basis.
And that shouldn't be your job. I don't view that as your job.
And you don't have the knowledge base.
Right. I am not specific to which document needs to be maintained for legal purposes or not. A general rule of thumb that we try to look at is two to three years on content. At that point, it should be able to have aged out enough that it could come down in certain circumstances that does fall through the cracks with certain types of documents. Most recently, as you saw in the email communication, we went through and made an effort to do a major purge, and found that there was a number of links that, unfortunately, others did not report back that were broken, which then caused an issue. We went back and restored all those documents. So right now on the site, and I gave you guys the link to look at, 100% of all documents, there's well over 4,000 documents that are sitting out there, and for myself or anyone else to go through them one at a time is going to be a major undertaking. So what we've asked for is taking out groups of sections and just removing topics. But again, the ownership of that is on the department heads and their staff to maintain the knowledge of the content. If the content is outdated, or if there are broken links, that is unfortunately upon the ownership of them.
Where does it go, if it comes off?
So we do an archive? No, no. It becomes localized base. We do an archive, and then from that standpoint, we do an archive to tape. But you have to understand, 99.9% of that data that is on the website has been generated somewhere else already, and was provided to us. So as far as the records retention, the only content that we look at archiving for any type of records retention is databases, information we collect through the website.
Well, it's huge. Like you say, all these documents and so on.
The landscape is changing. Landscape is changing. The user habits are changing, as well as the technology behind the devices, and the code is rapidly changing. It's a fine balance between what we can and cannot do, because just because the new and latest device can operate in this manner, we cannot graduate the sites up to this type of a platform, knowing that still 95% of the viewership and the eyeballs looking at this content are still back using, you know, an older format. So we need to ensure that we're backwards-compatible, as well as being able to advance. So a lot of times, there might be a desire to move forward faster, but just looking at the analytics of the use and the technology behind that use, we have to slow that process down, and look at it as far as what is our major visitor, the formats of their computers and their software, how they're browsing the site.
Other questions for Dave?
Thank you.
Okay. David, thank you. We're going to take about a one-minute break. We'll give David an opportunity to get back down with his team, and then we'll start up with the actual work session in about, just about a minute. Officially call the work session to order at 7:07 PM, and I'll let the minutes reflect that we have four of the board members here this evening. Mr. Quinn is out of town on business and is absent.
And I will add that I have a message for Mr. Quinn. He's watching live.
Okay. Thank you very much. We have the February 10th, 2016 minutes before us, and would entertain a motion of approval for those minutes.
I'll move to approve the minutes of February 10th.
I'll second.
Okay. We move and second. Any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, then the minutes will stand approved as written. Thank you to Lisa for that. All of our monthly reports are in and accounted for for January, and we have no public hearings this evening. We do have a number of guests this evening, and we'll start with our first. This is with regards to 2126 Five Mile Line Road Outdoor Music, Mr. Costello. If you would tee it up, welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Supervisor. Paula Catalonis here this evening. She had sent a letter in requesting the board consider outdoor music on the patio in front of the Cha Cha's Restaurant. And I thought it'd be good to get her in and talk to you about that, and figure out what steps to be taken to get through that process. That, what you'd talk to her about, what you'd like to do.
Well, we'd like to have music out on the patio once a week. It's usually a three-hour, we currently do music inside. It's usually three hours. It's not heavy rock and roll or anything like that. It draws a lot of families. It's usually light, either jazz-type music, or like 70s, 80s, like maybe like you'd see at a wedding. Just fun, light music.
How many performers? This is live, or is this?
We usually just do duos. There's not, we don't have the room, and really don't want this to have, you know, a giant band or anything. Do we have a trio? That's the maximum we normally do. So there's not like drums or anything like that. They usually have a keyboard, a singer, and maybe a guitarist.
Paula, what times typically would you be doing this?
Normally, we do 6:00 to 9:00 PM.
6:00 to 9:00?
Is it amplified?
They do have a speaker, but it is not, I mean, especially outdoors on Five Mile Line, I don't think you're going to hear much over the traffic anyway. But it is, we're not even openly, anyway. We stop serving at 10 o'clock, so it's going to be, it's an early event, anyway.
You mentioned one time a week. Is there a particular night that you're looking for this? Thursday, Friday?
Probably, it would be a Thursday, Friday, or Saturday. And it might not even be every week. It would really depend on, you know, how many people show up. If it's not something that people are liking outside, then we won't do it, and obviously be weather permitting. But if it is nice out and the patio is full, we would like the option for the music to be outside instead of indoors.
Where would you envision them set up?
Inside the patio. We just, we have eight tables, and the patio is pretty large, so with two people, it doesn't take up much room at all.
Right up against the window, I'd do.
In the fence. I mean, it's going to be inside the fenced area.
It'll probably be in one of the corners.
Yeah, it'll be in a corner, because we still need to make room for the tables, for the gas, for the servers. Yeah. So it would be in one of the corners.
So Jim, what exactly are we doing legislatively in this?
Well, in the past, we have had public hearings on the matters. In every case, we've done it. I wanted to get them in early enough so that they wanted to pursue it, and you had the opportunity to review it. It was done prior to the weather getting really warm again.
We did this for Idris Kate, right? Did we do a live music?
No, he's inside. He's inside.
I'm just trying to think if there was any.
But they wanted to be outside, and we wanted to get them in early enough to have a public hearing, so you're not rushed, they're not rushed.
You had an opportunity to speak with Paula as it relates to holding a couple of events during the course of the season under a special permit versus going for, you know, something more permanent?
Well, we did, but there's another group, actually, Jeremiah is wrestling with that right now. What they've been told by our co-compliance officer is, one event could be seven nights, or it could be up to a week, or it could be one event, but you can't break it up where you have one here, one three weeks from now, one from, you've got to have three times a year, and whether that three times a year is one-week intervals of three, or you have one, or two, or three nights, that's it. So it kind of puts them in an awkward position, and I don't think she wants to have to deal with that, if she doesn't have to.
Okay. All right. Proceed, interested in proceeding with a public hearing, you know, for this, get them in, you know, so that they can at least get into the process, so by the time nice weather is upon us, that they have that opportunity to go through and do that.
When do you envision, optimally, when would you like to start, like, May or June? at, like, May or June?
I mean, I'm sure the patio won't open before Memorial Day, or, yeah, Memorial Day. Who knows? Whether we've had this year, you know, could be. It's going to have to be nice enough, especially at night, so.
We'll work with you to get the application and everything in, and we'll try to get you in sometime in late March or so.
All right, sounds good.
Okay. Great. Before we leave, other questions, board, that you need? Anything else for the record, Jim, that you feel is appropriate for this particular application the board should be aware of?
Just out of curiosity, how many people seating on the deck at this point?
We have, I've spent so many months now.
18. I thought it was 20.
About 20, about 24.
Yeah. All right.
Okay. Anything else? All right, good. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
All right. We'll move on to our second item. We have requesting a fence installation within a drainage easement at 135 Galant Circle. And again, if you would tee this up, cause.
I'm sorry, if you'd like. I see you, Mrs. Castello.
Hi, yes.
Hi, how are you? I recently met with Mrs. Castello's husband, Ryan. They have a property at 135 Galant Circle. There's a drainage that's running through the back of their property. They would like to fence that drainage ditch in, and I didn't find out from him what the purpose of that was. Do you have dogs or children or?
Children.
Children. The, there's been another one that was reviewed back in 2010.
Right.
It's a little bit of a different situation than what they have, because they didn't have as deep an easement on their property as the Castello's have. The PRC reviewed it. They have a little, they have some concerns about it. And number one, there's, that ditch is kind of deep, and the question's going to be, you're not going to be able to fence that thing in and block water or anything like that. So, the question was, how are you going to do it in such a way that water's able to push through?
I guess my first question is, is the easement line considered where the creek is?
No, the easement line is about 20 feet from the creek area.
Okay, it's a aluminum fence, so anything can go through it? It's not a, is the fencing, is the fencing inside the ditch? Is the ditch outside of the fencing?
If you had.
So, we have a building house, you think the ditch, and then the fence, and then the creek.
Right, here's the creek in the back of their yard. They want to fence, I think, he said he wanted to fence from the backside of your house, back around, and then come back around to the back of the house again.
So, including the ditch in your yard then?
It would do that.
Right in front of where the creek is.
And the easement area, I'm sorry, I've been playing here, but easement area falls within the back portion of their property. They want to fence all the way around the back. We did talk, I talked to your husband about the fact that he would be responsible for taking the fence down if the town ever had to go in and do any maintenance work, and it appears that we would have to at some point in time, because it's starting to look like we need some work again. We did some about five or six years ago. You would be, you'd be responsible for taking the fence down and putting it back up after the work was done. The question really is, the type of fence that you're proposing, I'm not quite sure what it is in terms of the aluminum type of fence.
Just normal chain link?
No, it's not the chain link. It's the bars.
Okay, got it.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, so, okay. So, that would be the case. You go about a four-foot-high fence is what you're looking at now?
54 inches.
Yeah, okay. It's a little bit higher than that. So, you would, you know, that would be a situation where we'd have to monitor to see if water was going to be able to flow through, if any blocked up on it. Your whole neighborhood's going to get, you know, valued because of it. It's a very testy site down there. It takes a lot of water from the entire subdivision, and even further to the east of you. So, it's a, it's a major drainage pattern for that area.
Do PRC, do PRC note any concern with erosion that would be caused by a fence being installed there?
No, actually.
Would that create any additional?
No, that's not the issue. The issue is sometimes you can stop going down the creek or the swale that gets clogged up and blocked, and then also may get water backing up into their neighbors, and that's one of the concerns.
And just so you know, when ditches are cleaned, it's not just cleaning inside the ditch, it's machinery that goes.
Yeah, it's a 20-foot slot that we're using the whole time.
That straddles the ditch and goes, so that would be, that would necessitate removal of the fence. And I don't know, did you, is it about every five years that that's?
No, we had to go in a while back. There were some, there were some issues back there. They've been taken care of. I think it was even done before the neighbors of 21 came in.
Okay.
That's why we felt more comfortable at that time, because we just cleaned it, I think. But, again, it's just a function of making sure, if you grant it, that they have to do a whole lawless agreement, they have to verify that they, that'll be recorded at the county clerk's office. They will have to verify that they will be responsible for the, for the taking the fence down and putting it back up at their cost.
The normal items.
Exactly. And if we go in and do any work on your property, we will obviously go back and regrade it and see the properties, so that it doesn't, it looks like it did when you lived in it the first time.
So, is the concern, the depth of the ditch itself, you know, versus, you know, a swale and what have you? So, I know that DPW typically is at PRC. My guess is you're not looking to put the fence in tomorrow.
We're looking at next month.
Okay. So, I guess the question would be, you know, every Wednesday, we've got, we've got the team with Valentine, Ronnie, Dennis, Anzota, Bobby Moore sit, and they take a look. And one of the things that I might request, and then be back to the board in two weeks for our work session, is maybe actually do a site visit out there.
Photos. I want to visualize.
And bring them back, bring them back in two weeks, you know, for us to just take a look at that. It'll also, it'll also give us an idea if there's any, any additional work that may be needed to be done in that area.
All right, I want to go out today and get some photographs, but it just wasn't conducive. Especially with the children, if you've got kids, obviously, you're going to have that grate, or that area open so that, you know, water can flow through. It's not going to prevent them from getting out if they want to, obviously.
Well, they can't get through the fence. But, in the ditch part?
Well, they would be able to get through the ditch part. I mean, if you're fencing, if your house is here and you're fencing like this, they'll be able to go underneath both ways if they want to. I mean, it's that deep of a swale.
So, the ditch would be considered what we think is the creek?
Right.
Okay, we're not, we're going in front of that.
Okay, well, he indicated that we want to go to the very back of the property when I met with him.
Yeah, and what we were told when we purchased the house was that the very back of the property goes beyond the creek, or?
Well, it's, it is, though, when I checked it, I've got mapping here that shows where it is, it's right on your property.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so.
No, we're going in front of that. Like, if you go to the house and take pictures or look at any of it, there's a small garden. We're going to go like two feet past the garden before what would be considered the ditch.
Well, that being the case, I think Tony's absolutely on target. We'll just go out and meet with you out there.
Let's, let's just make sure.
You're giving a lot more information than your husband.
Because there's a bridge there, so I figured that.
And show her that map.
Yeah, we will, we will set up an appointment with you.
It's not the first time that people come in and they're not, you know, have been told where the line is.
Yeah, this is a personal, but I will, I'll set up an appointment with you, your husband, and come out and take a look at it with our DPW people, and make a decision as to where you want it, then come back and make a recommendation.
Yeah, I think that, I think that would be good. That way, there's no misunderstanding.
Yeah, nobody can go under that.
My concern is always that the homeowner knows what they're getting into. You know, that, that, you know, you want your fence and that's your standard, but always to make sure, you know, this back and forth is live, just to make sure you know what you're getting into in the event that, the likely event that there needs to be some sort of maintenance done, that you're aware of that.
Yeah, let's do that. I've got your number. I'll give you a call, and then we'll come out in the next couple of days and check it out with you, and come back and report.
And then I was, and I was going to say, and then I was just going to give you, then the next, the next meeting with the board would be on March 9th.
March 9th?
Yeah.
Okay. I am currently on maternity leave, so I'm home.
Excellent.
If you, you know, there's no time.
I will get back to you tomorrow on this other time this week.
Thank you. That would be good. So, we'll show this as a held, we'll show this as a held item, and we'll bring it back to the, to the board on the, on the 9th. Yeah, don't ring the doorbell.
Oh, no, go ahead. He sleeps right in there.
You're lucky, right?
Take care.
All right, thank you very much for your time. All right, we'll move on to our third guest. This is modifications to South Point Grill, 1400 Empire Boulevard, Mr. Costello.
Thank you, Tony. We have Johnny D, and also who's the applicant and operator of the restaurant, Grill, and his architect, Randy Peacock. They came to the building inspector a couple of weeks ago, indicated that they could modify the interior of the building from what was originally proposed. I'm going to let you go through that process, and I think you've got some background information that I said. I'll let you go through the process, if you can get a feel for what you're going to cover.
Sure. First of all, if I, sitting here weird, I pulled a muscle in my neck playing volleyball last night, so I could move my head about like that.
Did you win?
Yes, we took all three games.
All right. And you took one, and you took one for the team, so, all right. Very good.
I've been working with Johnny D on the development of the interior of the restaurant building, and one of the things that they came across very quickly was that the project was going to cost a lot more than what we had initially thought. It's not the first project that's gone down that route. One of the things that they looked at to increase their income out of the project was to glass in the outdoor porch so that they could use it year-round, not realizing that that was going to kind of trapeze over the boundaries of what had previously been approved for the project. In your original approvals, there was a figure given of 100 seats on the interior and 40 seats on the patio outside. That's actually a little bit higher with an actual table layout in there. We have 20 seats at the bar, 86 seats at tables, so it comes out at 106 on the inside. So, it's six more seats than what John had initially talked about. And then, on the exterior, we have a plan with us that shows 48 seats on the patio space. There's some open area. I figure we could probably, at some point, they could fit about another eight seats at tables in that patio space. That puts us about 16, I'm sorry, about 22 seats over what that original estimate was that was in your findings from, from your approval on the project. This enclosure of the space doesn't change the amount of space used by the restaurant, it just makes the amount of space that was currently just all exterior usable year-round so that they can gain the income from that space all the year-round. We look at, the project was approved with the maximum seating during the summertime, when the outdoor space and the inside space would, would be in use, which is also the point in time when that project is at its maximum usage as well, with the pool club and the marina and the other Basil's Restaurant there in full swing during the summer. So, I believe that we would be in a situation here where using it during the winter, we're actually using it at a time when the peripheral traffic from the pool club is less, so that we wouldn't have any issues with parking for that.
The marina too.
Yeah, and the marina's also closed during the winter as well, so they wouldn't, they wouldn't have that parking for those two uses on the site at that time.
Well, the winter will be fine. It's the summer, it's going to be.
Correct, correct. Which is, that's why I said, that's, I mean, you approved it, understanding that maximum parking situation, which was using those seats during that summertime period. So, hopefully, you don't see an issue with being able to use them year-round as well.
And I thought about the fact that if weather was bad in the summertime, obviously, people are not sitting outside, but they're not, they're also not at the marina, and they're also not, you know, doing other things, and they're not at the pool side either. So, it kind of runs hand in hand. The weather drives the process in terms of who comes and who doesn't.
Right. The way it was glassed in, they're big sliding glass doors, it still has a very open feeling to it, has the railings, and it's almost difficult to tell that it's, that it's been closed in, so.
So, will it open up in the summertime?
Yeah, the doors are sliding glass doors, so they can open them.
Size on it, though? I mean, there's like.
Those windows.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, they don't open up all the way, it's just.
It's like a sliding glass door. You get 50% of each opening.
Are they well insulated? So, if you're sitting next to the windows?
Yeah, it's all insulated glass, yeah.
Okay, good.
It's just sort of fashionable, it's what businesses are doing, you know?
Well, I personally don't have any issues with what you're doing. I think it's a business decision on your part. You know, clearly, you've taken into the Four Seasons that we have here in Rochester, especially at the south end of the bay. And as far as I'm concerned, you're just kind of enclosing outdoor seating space and making it indoor seating space, which, again, is a business decision on your part. So, I'm, I'm fine with, you know, this proposal.
I think it'd be concerning parking, and there's a lot of, there was a lot more than enough parking to begin with, so I don't, I don't think that's.
Yeah, I think there's more than adequate parking to support the last motion.
I'm good with it.
Give him the optics, you know?
Okay. Other, other questions, board? Certainly, the logical question, you know, is, is that, does this require another public hearing, you know? So, I think we should at least vet that out here over the next couple of minutes.
I did think about, I did think about that early on, as a matter of fact, we did discuss that when I met with them. There's really no exterior expansion area. It's really, it's really a function of what they're trying to do inside to maximize their ability to use the site.
Use the same footprint, yeah.
Yeah, if they were going to change the footprint in any way, then there would be no question you'd have to bring them back in. But for an interior modification, I think the board of reviewing it, as a matter of fact, I was questioning early on whether the board really wanted to review it, but I thought that it was different than what you would have proposed.
We shouldn't be aware. It's good to be on our radar, yeah.
I think it's, exactly, because, you know, just, if nothing else for the record, there is a continuity of the record from what was proposed, what was approved by the board, and then obviously through what's being proposed for the modification. You've got, you've got the continuity that, you know, through, through everything.
The whole story is told, that's right.
Yep, absolutely. Okay. Anything else that we should be aware of that is not part of the record, that we should add to the record?
No, that's pretty much the sum and substance of it. And certainly, we will put a letter together explaining the modification.
Okay. And this has been reviewed by?
PRC.
By PRC and Fire Marshal's Office as well?
As a matter of fact, the Fire Marshal's Office started the process from driving to this point.
Okay. Good, good. Anything else for the record that you feel is appropriate, we should add, that isn't on the record?
I think we've explained it.
Okay.
When, when are you looking to have opening day?
Maybe July.
Really? That quickly?
Trying.
Go, go, go.
Really?
Well, good luck.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you very much. Great, thank you. Appreciate, appreciate the follow-up and closure of that.
I had a couple of, these are two plans with sealed for the exiting. Would, do you like those? Can we pass those?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. That will take us to our fourth item, which is an update development at 2146 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. Again, Mr. Costello.
Thank you. This is an ongoing process with Dr. Filon. The last time we had met, you had asked him not to spend a lot of money, but to get some designs of what the potential could look like of a building with a Dun Tire on it. He also offered a sound study that was done for a similar operation for Dun Tires. That provided me with that. And he's just handed out a plan showing what the layout would look like if you had been involved with this project.
The car wash. Up front. But you're not showing what's behind, right? We're only talking about what?
Right, the car wash. That's where the car wash is now.
And the tires.
The doors would be facing the car wash.
Gotcha.
So the doors are facing, doors are facing north?
North.
So you did submit, you know, some information and materials from AVL Design as it relates to some acoustical issues, noise survey and what have you. So that was made part of the record since the last time that we in fact got together. Okay, so you compared, you compared the information from noise and frequency of traffic, you know, versus, versus noise from near, what I'll call the nearest residential property line. I'll just underscore the residential property line. And the proposal, the proposal would be that this entire building, a portion of this building would be used as Dun Tire and then the rest of it would be used for other retail?
Correct.
So what is that, what is that breakdown roughly? Percentage-wise, what percentage is going to be, are you proposing to be a Dun Tire versus what percentage of the building to be?
Probably 80%.
80%, 80% Dun versus 20%. I think one of the, one of the items that, and I'll just speak for myself, I'll give the other board members an opportunity if they would like to weigh in or make any comments, is, you know, one of the, one of the things that certainly, you know, I envisioned for that area is to be a little bit more customer service and retail-focused versus, you know, maybe what I'll call heavy, more heavy of a commercial. And, you know, I recognize that we have, we have an existing car wash that is, that is there. But everything else that we've attempted to develop in that area is more what I'll call retail, some restaurant operations, some office types of operations. And, and so as I was envisioning that area, that's kind of what I was seeing for that versus what I would call more hard, hard type of operation, you know, like a maintenance, auto mechanic or maintenance, recognizing they don't do the full-blown, but, you know, tires and, you know, things like that. So I still, you know, at least personally, as I take a look at that, you know, I question, is that the best use for that area? Or would that area be better served with more, you know, retail and, you know, customer service by way of restaurant type of operations versus the heavy commercial? So I just, I just want to put that on the table, you know, as I, as I take a look at that. I think, I think certainly the additional information as it relates to the noise, I think that certainly is, you know, is helpful information. But again, that's a piece that I'm just, you know, personally struggling with a little bit. So I just want to make sure that's on the table.
Yeah, I, a couple of weeks ago, when we, when Dr. Filon first kind of brought this idea forward, I, you know, expressed my concerns about, you know, it's, to me, any, I don't, can't remember if it was a Mavis or Dun Tire or whatever, but it just was a little bit more of an intense use than what I'd like to see in that area. And I think Dr. Filon's done some, some great work in some of the other properties with, you know, the restaurants and the retail. And, you know, I give you a lot of credit for that because I think that that is starting to create some synergy in that part of the plaza that's, you know, being well received by the residents. I just think that putting a tire store in there is not really the vision that I would like to see as that, you know, as those properties start to come to completion. You know, you've got a medical building, you have a daycare restaurant, you've got two restaurants with Panera, you've got some, you know, some soft retail up front, and then just putting a Dun Tire store in there just doesn't complete what I think is, you know, a good vision for that area. So with that being said, I do not support the Dun Tire store going into this location. I think you've done some great things with some of your other locations up there, and I thank you for that. I just, this one's just not doing it for me.
I would concur, and I think actually in light of what Andy has said, it's almost as if you've done such a great job with the other properties that it's raised the bar as to, I think, what should fit in there. And I think that additional uses other than, you know, automotive-related would be more fitting in there.
I agree, something other would be preferable. I'm not as anti-Dun Tire because I see it as something people need, you know, it is a need, and it's not, it's not like it's a big repair shop. At the same time, when you look at what we've created so far in that little area, it doesn't really fit that, it's not, we don't have a theme, but it doesn't fit that look that's there. It'd be better served somewhere else. The one over on Eastway, on that little, little jog they have there in the Dun Tire, you know, that, that wasn't created like this is kind of special, you know? We're kind of creating it from the beginning almost. We had daycare there, but then everything else kind of coming around it. It just doesn't fit that, that corner.
Other, other questions, other comments? Anything from a staff standpoint that the board should be aware of?
No, I think it is, it is what it is. It's the board's decision to make, and there were no technical issues associated with it respective of the PRC, so.
Okay, so, you know, PRC from a technical standpoint, they, there was no, no issues. So no issues, you know, size of building, overall traffic flow, infrastructure, those types of things.
All the drainage facilities and sewers are in place. It's just a function of what the board will decide as to that area.
What are some other items that you're exploring, Doctor, potentially for this area?
You have the sleepies there in the.
For this building?
Yeah, potentially. I mean, what are, what are some other things that you could be exploring for this? And again, I recognize that, you know, if you have any specific dealings with companies that you can't disclose, I get that. But a sense of what other type of uses that you might consider in there if the Dun Tire is not something that, you know, is being viewed as favorable by the board?
I mean, there are other restaurants that are looking and, I mean, you know, less intense retail.
Got it, got it. Okay.
So actually, that leads me to my other question.
Sure.
The size of the building is not a problem.
From the size of the building standpoint, from the overall site plan component, traffic flow, infrastructure, what I'm, what I'm hearing is that technically not an issue as viewed by our PRC. And again, I won't speak for the board, I'll speak for myself. I believe that that building is in fact in keeping and fitting with what I would view for that, for that area, size and scope-wise.
I think you're looking at additional parking on the other side of the roadway as well as part of the ability where to be constructed that size? Recognizing that all parking there is shared by everyone.
To the east, was what you're saying, Cost?
Yes, that's right.
Could it, you know, on the other side of the access road?
Right.
No, what I'm going to ask is, I mean, I still, I'd still have to come in front of the planning board for the size of the building.
Well, the town board, a lot of this building is within the BNR zone. So you still, they still have jurisdiction over the incentive process.
I think one of the things that we talked about, Doctor, would be, this would be one of the few times that we would look to hold a joint meeting between planning and town board so that we minimize the number of times that you would come, come before. We would work and schedule it so that the planning board would take care of their component, the town board would take care of their component.
So am I, would I still go forward with the planning board is my question?
You'd do both boards at the same time, probably. Yeah. If you were to shave that area off into the general business zone and kept everything within the BNR zone, then this board would have jurisdiction over that process.
Full jurisdiction, full jurisdiction.
It's not a horrible thing to have a joint meeting with the board. The board does it periodically. They've done it in the past.
It doesn't happen often. It just, it, what it, what it does, holding the joint meeting is, is instead of coming to the planning board and having a conversation, then coming to the town board and having a similar conversation, they're going to, they're going to look at a couple of different technical things, and we're going to look at a couple of more, what I'll call, policy-related things as it relates to incentive zoning. Doing it together just is a little bit more efficient.
It'd be more media again, so. It's if, if you can somehow shave that off and add it on, back into the area where the BNR is, they can then put it back into this board's hands without having to go to the planning board as well. That's something to look at, I think. Unless it really messes up your traffic flow of the property, and it looks like, you know, we just have to look at that and see if it's the best situation for you.
Because I think, you know, just as a reminder to the board, I think what Jim is talking about is that this, this property is a deep, is a deep parcel. It goes right back to the residential component over, over here. And I, and I think the proposal or the thought that Dr. Filon had on this is that if he were to look to build this, that this would provide, in this concept, would provide that buffer to the east.
That's right.
I don't want to put words in your mouth. I guess I'd look for just the confirmation that that was, that was the case, so. Okay. All right. Other, other questions? Again, other questions? Doctor, any other questions for us at this, at this point?
When would we get a joint meeting?
Well, if you come in with a plan like you're doing here, finalizing whatever it is you're trying to accomplish, and obviously you're looking at a different type of use, certainly I'll sit down with you again as we have in the past. I will relay everything back to Tony and the board. We could probably do it, sending stuff, emailing to make sure everybody's comfortable with what you're proposing. And then that would determine which boards or board you go to for the approval process.
Okay.
Okay, so you just have to make a reminder to what you want to do here and then get it back to me, and then I will start with the board.
Okay.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to our action items, law and finance. Mr. Bylow, who has probably spent more time with this board than, than he had planned. Welcome, Mr. Bylow.
Not a problem. The seasonal, the seasonal bid opening was held March or February 11th for the recreation seasonal brochure that's done three times a year. This time, we ended up with, we ended up with five bids that were submitted, which is, I think, slightly up from last year, if I think if I remember right, that we received three bids. So did get a little bit more activity in regards to submissions for this go-around. We did disqualify one bid for not bidding on appropriate, the appropriate specs, so that left us with four to look at. One of those four was actually an out-of-state company. Their price came back much higher, quite a bit higher than the others. So it really came down to the two that we've worked with in the past, Webster Printing and Penny Lane. Both of those are print companies that we've dealt with off and on throughout the years, just depending on who's had the, who's had the better bid. This, this go-around, we had, there was bid one, and then there was five alternatives to it. We've pared that down from years past. It used to be a little lengthy in regards to the types of bid in different alternates that were being bid on. We, like I said, we pared that down, so there was just one bid with five different alternates, which were all based on quantity. This year's bid, low price was Webster Printing Corp. They were, they were the lowest bid in all, all six categories for the main bid as well as all five alternates. Their bid is actually, I mean, they were, Webster and Penny Lane were very close and competitive, but what Webster submitted for their bid this year is basically a part of what we're currently paying to. So there's really very little in regards to an increase in the printing. We, we bid out 18,000 copies is the number that we, we submit. We mail, do a direct mailing or a flat mailing to roughly 17,000. So we generally have about 1,000 that are delivered to the town. And then one of the bid alternates for each one of the, for each one of the number of copies is also for alternates, if we need to order additional. So Webster Printing, again, won the bid in regards to the lowest price. From a department standpoint, there's not a, there's not any issue because we've worked with them in the past, so we're very comfortable. They handle it without any issue.
Okay, so recommendation to go with Webster Printing. You look to do a resolution, it'll be in by this Friday, coming Friday, for our March 2nd town board meeting.
Yep.
And so that we keep the clerk straight, we'll, you'll also have that on the G-Drive.
Yep.
Okay. Questions for, questions for Chris?
No, I think Chris and his team do a tremendous job with the recreation brochure. I know a lot of young parents with kids look forward to it, and clearly they can get it online, but they also like to go through the brochure and circle the upcoming programs, you know, as reminders and stuff like that. So I commend you and your team when you put that together. I think it's, it's a document that's very well received by residents in this town.
I agree. It's one of those, you know, we look at it every year in regards to its usefulness in the department, and we all understand how, how important it is for people to be able to get that hard copy. You know, it came, kind of really was driven home in the fall when we had, there was a little bit of a mailing issue that we were forced to deal with, which delayed the brochure going out. And that typical, let's say, two-week window when people start receiving, weren't receiving it. It was amazing how many people were coming in or calling, saying, where's the brochure? So we were able to square that away so that when we did the winter brochure, there wasn't an issue. But it was amazing to see the number of comments that came back. So you're right, the number of people who looked for that.
Well, and I also think the quality of it and the content of the brochure, you know, gets better and better every year. And, you know, again, I think that's, you know, a lot of credit to you and your team in putting it together and really thoroughly thinking about how you put the content together in an orderly manner. Certainly, it's a lot better than it, than it was in the past.
It's down to, we've been able to, Sabrina and Lynn Anne spend a lot of time being able to format and get it to where it's, it's appropriate. We're down to around 48 pages. We haven't gone to a 52-page brochure in over a year, which is, you know, again, the high end of that, that bid proposal anyway. So we've been able to stay at the 44, 48. We do bid down to 44, just in the event that we have a season where we think maybe we can condense and get rid of one section or four pages.
When is that going to come out?
Should be out no later than, I'll say, the end of March. Information's going into it right now. Actually, I think we say it has to be done by April 1st.
Right.
Yeah. Summer issue will be ready no later than April 1st.
And last year, in 2015, how many programs were offered to Penfield residents through the recreation department?
Put a number on that, man.
Is it over 1,000?
Oh, yeah. And that's just, I think the number that I ran in January, again, we're just talking, that's just rec track numbers.
Right.
You throw in the numbers that don't go through the registration system, things like hikes or concert series or, you know, events like that, that don't even go through registration.
So if it goes out in April, it's going to cover Independence Day, the summer series.
Correct. The brochure that's on now is a winter-spring. This is the one that we've condensed, so it's winter-spring. There are some summer, summer programs that are in there that we want to get in early registration for, but the bulk of the summer events, July, the concert series, all that will be in this next.
Right.
Thank you. Let's move ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
Yep.
Thanks for your time. Appreciate it. All right. That will take us to item number two, which is the catalog company, Pergla of Binghamton. That's the restoration supplies. And certainly would welcome the applicant to join us. Who was at the meeting? Michael, thank you. And so with that, we had the hearing last Wednesday. I'm not sure that anything by way of surprises came out. Forty-year company, 1.5 employees, mostly internet business, Monday through Friday, nine to five, a small showroom, window displays, and no company vehicles, about 1,000 square foot for the building, I think is kind of a recap of that, of that application.
I watched the public hearing on TV the next day.
Okay.
So I covered it.
Okay. Now, Tony, I, first I want to thank the applicant for choosing to set up his business in Penfield.
Great.
So I know there's a lot of other places you can go, but it's great to see you choose the four corners in Penfield, so thank you for doing that. I wish you the best of luck, Anna, and I hope it's successful. So I support it, and let's move ahead.
Yes, I absolutely do.
Thanks.
Okay. So Jim, you'll be able to prepare a resolution for the board to review by the end of the week?
I will.
And we could have that into the board next Wednesday with the, with standard items that we have for the four corners?
Yeah, there was nothing outstanding that.
And I'm sure probably the main key thing would be, you know, our normal inspection by the building department so that we go through and do that.
And their sign permits.
And their sign permits.
It's up and running.
Okay, so let's move forward. Mike, welcome. As Councilman Moore said, welcome. Look forward to your business not only coming to Penfield, but growing in Penfield.
Take a tour of it when you're all set up.
Oh, yeah. Come over.
All right.
We have to make a Penfield Globe.
There you go. Perfect, there you go. All right, Mike, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Thank you for coming out tonight.
No, no problem. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone here from the art tonight?
I don't know so. She had classes.
Okay, so that, she had classes, so I'm going to hold that one, and I'm going to take those in order that are here. I'm going to ask Mr. Kreckman to join us. This topic, I think, is one we want to get in front of the board as, as an update. And James, if you will, give us the lowdown of what, what you got.
I'm here to talk about the telecommunications systems at the town of Penfield. I drew up a brief document on. Drew up a brief document on what we have and what needs to be done.
Thanks, Gus.
And I'd like to ask that we, permission of the board, to forge forward with setting out to get spec for a new telecommunications system at the town of Penfield. So I'll give you a minute to read through that and answer any questions you may have.
Can you just tell us just a snapshot of what would be new, you know, what's new and improved?
Or what happened, why do we need one? Why do we need a new?
The current system that we're operating on is 1997 vintage, and it's a discontinued system that is becoming more and more difficult to get parts for and find support for. I think we've definitely gotten our money's worth out of the current system, and as technology forges forward, we are continuing to see issues with our current system. You know, back in 1997, we didn't have voice-over IP per se, so...
So Jim, would you go to an RFP or a bid for this system?
Well, there's a couple of things I would do. One is I would look at what's already procured on New York State contract and see what's available in that option, and then also look at an RFP. Back in '97, when we did purchase it, we did an RFP.
Have you, or are you planning to talk to other towns? Have you already done that about their systems, to see what's working, what's not working?
I have not talked to any other towns to see. I've called other towns, and only because my experience with communication systems, they are, some of them are even behind us on communication systems. It's an always-evolving field. It's like a cellphone, you know, it's changing constantly, computer changing constantly. So I'm just trying to set up the town the best, with the best solution and path moving forward, knowing that I'm not going to be here forever, and when I hand it off, I want it to be something that's robust.
Do we have difficulties? Do we have some difficulties in the home?
We are having difficulties with our communication systems, especially between the community center and the town hall, due to its voice-over IP going that direction, and we had to add equipment to try and make that happen, and it's not really as reliable as what we were led to believe on that. So it's not really a bulletproof thing, and I'd like to see it updated.
So just by way, maybe of a little bit additional information, we have a tech team, and we get together, you know, as needed to take a look at a number of different aspects of our overall technology. Our last tech team was about a week and a half, two weeks ago. This was one of the items that was put on the table. Because of the fact, as Jim said, we're having some problems, and because we can't go into this, it's not a go into a Verizon and get a new device, you know, it takes some time. And so a couple of things that I think we're going to look at, and Jim is going to explore, is, one, certainly, do we need to, you know, bring in a consultant to help assist us? So that's something we're going to take a look at. Number two, as you mentioned, he's going to take a look at specs that might be available, you know, as part of state bidding process. We have seen some failures, and equipment is becoming a little bit more difficult, you know, to get and to replace. And then the other component is, is that it's probably a six-to-nine-month process, and one of the things that we want to get a jump on is, is that not having it be another year old and ending up with a catastrophic failure and, you know, kind of be behind the eight ball. I think Jim has done a great job of identifying it, kind of being proactive. And then the other thing is, is that if you take a look, that in 1997, we spent approximately 112,000, and so as we have started to gather, you know, some initial data, so 20 years later, a more robust system may fall on the line of somewhere between 90 and 120,000. But it'll also give us an opportunity to see what those prices are. And one of the things that Jim is going to look at and make recommendations back to us ultimately would be, could we start the project in 2016 with some available, you know, funding with a completion of, you know, 17, you know, so that we move in that direction? But again, with the RFPs, that would flush all that detail out. We just wanted to make sure, because it is a pretty significant item and not specifically, you know, in the budget, to at least get it to the board for FYI and your blessing for us to at least move forward and potentially engage the services of a consultant. And if we were to do that, we would certainly bring a resolution to the Town Board for that.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Jim? Jim, thank you. Thanks for your efforts on this. Thanks for your efforts in keeping this thing going, because Jim does a lot of behind-the-scenes with his pocket knife and other materials.
Your name was brought up earlier about the break room downstairs. Do you have a partner?
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
You like it?
No, I wanted to see it. This is what they were telling us about tonight.
We'll take a tour.
Yeah.
All right, James, thank you.
You're welcome.
We're going to hold on the art store until the next item, and we'll go to Public Works. We have 1357 March Road out of District User, Mr. Valentine, but today, we've got Mr. Costello, who is new and improved.
That's all right.
So if you tee that up for the board, Cos?
Thank you, Tony. This is Jeff Lewis. Jeff lives at, well, I shouldn't say, he doesn't live there, he has property at 1357-1361, at March Road. I have some map in here for you guys, too, that might help a little bit. I know you've got a couple more for us. Thank you. And he approached us a while back. I think he's interested in doing it. The reason I brought these maps for you, they show, I'm going to give you one, too. They do show the environmental sensitivity of the area he owns. There's an X hopefully on the property that he's looking to develop right in the middle of the...
X does mark the spot.
Yeah, right by the floodway and also by the federal wetlands on March Road. There is a large area, there's an area large enough to put a home on it, possibly a septic system. We're not certain how well the septic system was fair there. Have you done any testing?
I have gone through the PERC test at DePaul with the county. It's doable, albeit marginal, because it has to be a raised bed system.
Right.
Which, given the constraints of that...
Very expensive.
And it's very expensive.
Yeah.
And it also shrinks the footprint of the house.
And will probably have to be replaced in a lifetime.
Right.
So he approached Mark a while back with the idea that he might want to look at the possibility of running a two-inch force made from his site, approximately 2,075 feet westward to the Holden Court, which is Abington Place subdivision. There's a manhole there that he can tie into. And he's looking for some permission, or some guidance, actually, I think, to determine whether or not the board would even consider this, or if he should move back towards a marginal septic system.
And one of the things that Mark had thrown out there was the possibility of going a little farther north on 250 and crossing and tying into the newer crosstown development that is still...
It would seem less expensive for you just to go straight across it than having to go northward.
The overall length is about the same, depending on whether you could get them to leave a trench out for me when they did that for the new development.
Yeah, that's something somebody, Mark, could look into if the board sees fit to move forward. Some of the things to talk about, the PRC did review it. Some of the issues that came out of it were the fact that, number one, if Jeff is the only one that ties into it, it's not going to have a lot of flow going through it, which means there may be an issue for maintenance. The other question came about is, you're probably going to have to run it within a right-of-way, because you don't want it to go after easements from all the property owners to get there.
Right.
If it's in a right-of-way, you would have to have some kind of agreement where if we don't take it, he would have to maintain it. It's his cost and his effort.
Similar to what the state does with us, kind of in reverse, if you will. If there's a piece of apparatus that goes in that we assume liability, this would be obviously the reverse of that.
That's right.
And my expectation would be to build it to the town's spec with the cleanouts and manholes, so that ultimately, if everything fell into place, this could be dedicated to the town once sufficient households had tied in. Granted, that would require crossing the creek to do so. There would ultimately be only four households on, maximum four households on the west side.
Yes, and certainly, you're seeing an awful lot of vacant property between just property and 250, and that's the Gilliland property and the Doer property to the north. Those properties could not be served by this if they were coming for a development scheme of some type. They could not be served by this. But the other side of that, as Jeff just indicated, if you look back at this map, and he shows it on his map as well, the yellow map.
Right. There are another 17 households.
Yes, if you were to pick up these, he could pick up 17, even up to 24 households, I believe, on a two-inch force made. He could pick these properties up and take that material over to Abington. The question the PRC had is, is the town comfortable having all of March Road sewed, recognizing that there couldn't be an expansion of sewerage on that line?
Oh, you want the whole town sewed?
Well, sewerage also starts to initiate the need for growth in that earth, and that's the issue.
Oh, so like the Doer property? Oh, that's a good story.
Oh, the Gill, that Doer.
Neither of those could be serviced, but they would have to bring in an eight-inch main, and they would have...
They have big properties, right?
Yes, they are.
And should that come to fruition, and if there was a pump station there, I would have no objection to diverting and tying in to that pump station to reduce the overall length.
Sure. And that's a situation where we would take ownership of that pump station and any sewerage that goes with it.
So, I mean, one of the things that jumps out at me is, is that I think this warrants a little bit more review by this board. You know, right now, I think, Jeff, what you're saying is, is that 1357-1361, those are your properties.
Right.
Okay? Now, I see on your map here that you've provided, you've provided a tie-in to 1300 Fairport Nine Mile Point.
Yeah, I'm representing the stubs to the, to those, as well as a short stub for the roadway for 1360, should they want to tie in at some point. And so there would be a total of four west of the creek.
Yeah, so you'd have 1360, 57, 53, and then out at 1300.
Would you be looking for them to help support the cause?
I would like to, yes, in a perfect world. I mean, that would, if each of them kicked in, whatever reasonable number would be, that would almost bring my cost down on par with what the septic would be.
So right now, without them, septic's at 40,000.
Yeah, you're comfortably at 40, and my initial estimates for this, not including the cleanouts and manhole vaults, would be about 45.
Got it.
So, and obviously, I'm not sure what the vaults are going to cost for the cleanouts and all that, but I would estimate that's going to be in the 10,000 or 12,000 range.
Got it, okay. All right, so I think what I would, what I'd recommend to the board is that maybe we hold this for a couple of weeks. Let's take a look, you know, certainly, Linda's point is, is that goal is to try to provide as much sewer availability, you know, for residents so that they avoid, you know, potential costs with septic systems or reoccurring costs with septic systems. Certainly, the other issue is, is that discussion around our comprehensive plan and what do we have planned for this overall area by way of development. And I might suggest that maybe we have an opportunity to, you know, have Mark Valentine provide a little bit more information to us, you know, more broadly. So, I mean, the discussion that Jeff brings up is, is that the future extension to the east of the creek, an additional 17 homes, which essentially could take it all the way to Harris Road, you know, around ours. I might suggest that we do that, gather a little bit more information for the board, certainly to take a look at, and then come back, and then maybe have Mr. Valentine provide us. The other question that comes up is certainly the capacity in Webster.
Yes, and that's a good reason for that. We need to talk to Mr. Benway to determine what capacity we have to accommodate you and anything else.
Understood.
We'll do that for you.
That's another component, because I know with the development of Abington and then Barclay, there were, you know, some questions and some issues associated with that, so that would give us, again, some additional information on that front. So we'll look to do that between Mr. Costello, Mr. Valentine. I'm guessing you've had some conversations with Mark?
Yes.
So you know Mark?
Yes.
So maybe, Jim, what I'd ask is that, because he's not here, you were doing the heavy lifting tonight, you can pass on the heavy lifting to him tomorrow, and he can follow up.
We will follow up with Jeff Benway to find out what the status is.
Which I think would be good.
He can follow up.
And then they'll stay connected with you, Jeff.
Appreciate it, man. Thank you. If there's any questions, my contact info...
I see the contact information here.
We'll be contacting you.
Anything else, trip through.
Okay. Great. Jeff, thank you. Thank you for hanging in there.
My pleasure.
All right.
I'm serving for you.
We'll move back to the art store, art lessons at 1822, 1826 Penfield Road. Again, public hearing last week. I don't think there was anything that came out that created any major concerns, issues. Applicant proposing to utilize, you know, the entire facility, a couple of part-time people looking to do some art groups, some instructional activities, maybe two or three people at most at a time will be buying the building and actually, you know, working to do some remodeling of the building itself. So any additional items, Cos, that...
The only outstanding issue right now is she's in the process of creating an LLC for the site. She is also awaiting, she's in the process of getting some plans back to the building department, because they have to determine how this complies with the state codes relates to the prior use that was there since 1905. So she's in the process of preparing those plans and getting them into the board, and we'll get that resolved.
Accessibility upstairs, that kind of thing?
Well, that's the issue, and we're trying to wrestle through public assembly versus what she's proposing to do as an art studio up there. So we're trying to fight through that right now. Hopefully, we'll get that resolved fairly quickly.
Okay. Board thoughts? I'm good.
I watched it, the thing that she said she didn't know what she was going to be doing with the other part that had the photography studio yet, so...
She wants to lease that area out. That would have to come back to you, where are the other ones? That's right.
It's just the Masonic temple and downstairs where it was all state, last.
She's going to take up most of the first floor, but that area with the photography studio, she does want to lease that out. So whoever comes in, if it's somebody that's already in the four corners, that could be a streamlined process. If they're not, we'll have to bring them in.
Sure.
Very good. I think it's an excellent use of the...
And it's got some lights on in that building again.
Some art in windows.
Yep.
Get it to breathe some new life.
Absolutely.
Okay, so Jim, you'll prepare a resolution for the board, and we'll look to have that, to approve that on March 2nd as well.
Sounds good.
Okay, great. That brings us down to informational items, and just a couple of items to share with the board regarding the moratorium committee framework, and then a couple of other components, just so the board is aware of some discussions that have been taking place. You know, as it relates to the committee framework, I think we're now close to 80 people that have indicated an interest to serve. Obviously, to have a group of 80 is not realistic. One of the things that I would like to put on the table for our consideration is that... that we try to look to keep that committee to approximately 20 in size, approximately 11 of that 20, you know, be what I'll call directly impacted neighbors, six residents that are across the town. And then we have a representative from the school district as a major stakeholder, the conservation board and the historic preservation board, and then to round that out, you know, with a lead person for that. And so I would suggest that we look at that format and would encourage the board individually, if you would like to take a look at the list that everybody has to date, you take a look at the list and maybe structure your recommendations back. To me, I'll coordinate all that and see if we can put together a committee that provides the broadest representation that we can. The second item, I know that some of us have chatted either individually or collectively. I've had some recent conversations with Dick Horowitz. And then one of the things that I would, you know, encourage us to think about as we head into the public hearing on Wednesday, to think about a 12-month moratorium versus a six-month. And I think it might be important to get that information out prior to the public hearing, so that everybody, not only the sellers, any potential buyers, but especially our residents, understand what that is. And so if the board is supportive of that, I would suggest that maybe we get that piece of information out.
So would we have an amendment that night before the public hearing?
Yeah, it would look, I would look, you know, as, because it'll be under, you know, the law on finance portion, I might look for Councilman Moore, or, you know, right out of the gate, to just amend that. And then, you know, before we actually open it up for Mr. Horowitz to discuss, and then, you know, get input from any residents, either for or against the proposed moratorium. And look to do that. But I think getting that piece of information out, I know, again, some of us had chatted, and that's an interest, a point of interest that folks have, and I think all of us, you know, might agree that six months is pretty condensed to try to do some things and do them properly.
I think how it seemed to transpire was certainly six months is not unrealistic for a moratorium, or initially, and then I think as we proceeded and saw how many people were interested in the committee, and I know that Mr. Horowitz had done some research, I had done some research as well, because I had had some folks inquire to me as to, you know, why can't you do a permanent one, or why can't you do five years? And that, you know, legally, it's risky to go, you know, beyond a year or so. But there's going to be a lot to look at, and certainly that's the justification for 12 months, is that there's a lot of thorough discussion that needs to be had to get to some sort of, you know, recommendation.
Right.
So I would support the 12 months.
Okay.
And I feel that it's, you know, it's realistic and it's a comfortable timeframe.
Okay.
And so the last thing that I've been working on with Phyllis and Dave is that we know that there is going to be a lot of people, a lot of interest for the public hearing on Wednesday. And there may be some folks that either can't get here or may not want to battle the crowds. And because, you know, this is really a discussion about a moratorium, yes or no, one of the things that we put up today is online, and if you link right to the page for the shadows, anyone that either can't make it or wants to stay home and view it, they can go online and they can actually register. I support, I don't support the moratorium. They give their name and email address. And then they also, there's an area for them if they wish to make a comment. And so we'll have all of that information available the night of the public hearing to say, okay, in addition to those that may have come, that, you know, we receive, you know, 30 or 50 or 100, whatever, and, you know, 90 support a moratorium, you know, X number don't support it, type of thing.
Yes, it's good a start of that now. You don't want to sit at that night and all of a sudden, everybody starts voting, you know, and overwhelms downstairs, the website.
I'm sorry, Tony, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I think the intent, I think what happens, I think what I think a lot of people may think is that it's a time to talk about, you know, should we do this with a property, should we do that with a property? And really, the purpose of the public hearing is to either say yes to moratorium or not. And I think this board is pretty much has indicated in a number of different forms that we're supportive of that, but this is a legal process, you know, that we go through. And again, we want to make sure we maximize people's time, love to have the room, you know, filled all the time, you know. However, again, you know, what the vote is for, either to support or not support the moratorium. The second component of that, that'll probably be up and operating as early as Friday, again with the help of Dave and Phyllis, it'll be an opportunity so that any resident, if they want to go on and actually make some thoughts or input some thoughts about what they would like to see happen or not happen with that site. We're going to collect those as well. We're going to put them in a file. Once the committee, once the committee is formed, we will push that information to the committee, so that when they come to the table, they'll also have the benefit of, you know, whatever has been submitted by way of any thoughts, ideas, or other items.
Exactly. We have 80 people and we're not going to put all 80 on a committee, allow those 80 people to put their thoughts into...
Absolutely. Them and anybody else.
It's an organized process, and I think that certainly the input I've received, and I know you all have received as well from people, is very encouraging that the community at large is supportive of our initiative, that, you know, and I commend you for your leadership in taking the initiative before the news broke, so to speak, and talking immediately with us about pursuing a moratorium. And I think that is just a confidence in leadership that we need on an issue like this, because I think we know our residents well and we knew where they were going to fall on this, and we wanted to get started as soon as possible, because there is a process we have to go through.
Yes, okay. One last comment, as Tony and Dick thought it was a good idea, and I agree, that they requested that we notify all the neighbors in close proximity to the golf courses, which we did, and I have heard back that several have already received their postcards, so...
And we followed our, even though this might be considered a town-wide process, you know, which it is, we also thought, take the extra step and do the normal postcard notification that we do as we would any other application, so, and that was, you know, a good point by staff and Dick, you know, for us to move in that direction.
No, I think that the postcard's a good idea. I mean, should, you know, Dolomite or some other entity want to sue the town for whatever reason, it certainly keeps us in line with past tradition of notifying neighbors around a certain issue of a public hearing. So, I mean, Tony, you've said a couple of things. I support everything that you said tonight. I think the makeup of the 20-member committee is great with the 11 residents being around the golf course properties, six residents that what I kind of term is at-large, and then looks like three members of the committee, a conservation board member, a historic board member, and a school board member. Is that correct?
Right.
Is that correct? Okay. And certainly, I appreciate you putting forward the idea of moving the duration under section five of the resolution. Section five of the resolution talks about duration of the moratorium. Moving that to 12 months, I think that's a very good idea. And I think it gives the committee and it gives the town, you know, the time that it needs to sort through all of these issues. And then certainly, I support your initiative on allowing the community to voice their opinions, good or bad, through the town website. And I think that's in the spirit of openness and transparency with the process that we're going to be embarking on pretty soon. So I think that's a great idea and I certainly support it.
Thank you. Thank you. The other item that I just think's important is that, you know, certainly outside the group of 20, we would be looking for representatives from state, county DOT, certainly some members of our staff, so they would be available to answer questions and provide input and data feedback. So if there was, you know, a question about, you know, how many trips per day, how many, you know, what does the accident data show, what is, you know, this or what is that, we'll make sure that any and all of those representatives are available at the request of the committee, so that they have their, you know, answers or data or information provided as they continue to look at, you know, working to, you know, what the ultimate use or uses could be, and then provide that feedback back to us.
And I would even offer that, you know, some unique parcels in certain ways, that although we wouldn't necessarily use our advisory boards as consultants, so to speak, but I just think in terms of like the historic preservation board, in the event there is some sort of possible recommendation or treatment of a historical structure, that they could, you know, potentially be tapped to, you know, weigh in, discuss, offer their expertise with respect to, you know, taking a structure and making it, you know, giving it some sort of designation, if that's appropriate, if that's something that is, you know, will most likely be discussed in some fashion. I think that the group of residents that we have on the historic preservation board would be certainly ready, willing, and able and experienced...
Sure.
...to do that and interested.
All right. I think that's the last item on our agenda. I will, for the record, just indicate, and I should have done this when I opened the meeting, is that prior to the work session this evening, the board did meet to complete our priorities and goals for 2016. The board met with receiver of taxes, town clerk, HR and communications, as well as building, fire marshal, and zoning, and then rounded our evening out with PC TV. So we'll just let the record show that we did meet with all of those respective department heads. There being no further business come before the board for this evening, the work session of the 24th of February stands adjourned at 8:26 PM. Thank you. Thank you, staff.
Thanks.
Thank you to our clerk's office.[1729.16]